...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey John, sorry, I have five minutes to go from this. Yeah, John, we just started.
And you're starting?
Yep, we just started. Said the pledge, so.
You're...
I'm there.
Alright, thanks. Evening, John.
Good evening, John, and Claudia, and thank you for all you've done for our district.
Thanks. Alright, well, let's get to it. Section two, a move that we approved, the agenda, the consent agenda as presented, specifically noting the donations, $542 for Texas proceeds to the band, $292.51 to the holiday market donation to the band scholarship fund, $102.26 of holiday market proceeds from the pictures with Santa and tips for kids to the band, and $59.28 donations received to the Chicago musical to music theater.
Sorry?
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All ayes? Thank you. Alright, hearing of the audience, we got three, so we'll start the order of the game. Mr. Hill, you are up first.
Thank you. My name is Randy Hill, and my wife, Mary Hill, has been a teacher here since 2008. Mary's direct supervisor has bullied, harassed, and caused her tremendous mental stress by his continuous actions against my wife. He has created a hostile work environment. Mary and her representatives from the school district and KNEA have met with the director of special ed and her direct supervisor to resolve these issues. But after these meetings, nothing changed. The direct supervisor continued...
Yeah, we'll just ignore Dan and move back. Yeah, we're not, yeah, it's more, you know, the naming names in publicly being executive session things are things that we don't.
Okay.
I would recommend if you could leave the sheet with Don Yeo, we can kind of take a peek at that, make copies for ourselves at the end, and then look at that in the appropriate venue.
Okay. Am I supposed to stop there?
I would, yes. Next up, it's Mueller.
Good evening. I probably need to make a phone. It usually generally loud enough. I come this evening to bring up an issue or revisit an issue that was addressed at the school board meeting, last school board meeting, concern of some parents regarding curriculum at the high school. And I come to you as a graduate of Lansing Schools. I went all 12 years here, 13 technically. I have a master's degree in English literature, English education, and I'm also a librarian now. The literature that I read at Lansing High School prepared me to be successful. And good literature is going to prepare students to be successful. Some of the concerns that were raised by parents at the last meeting, I respect, and I respect any parent's right to choose what their child gets to read. But parents do not get to decide what the rest of the students in Lansing High School read. And if I said Lebanon, I apologize, I teach at Lebanon, so sometimes I interchange those. I became aware of this issue because I am the department facilitator at Lebanon High School, and I was contacted regarding our curriculum as well. And I hope that the curriculum that has always been in place in Lansing, which is reflective of diversity, interested kids, varied themes, continues to stay in place there. I know that Dr. Becker, Dr. Davis, as I would have known him when I was in school, is supportive of the curriculum that your teachers have designed. They didn't come by a happenstance. I know they put a lot of thought into it, and I won't spend much more time, but I do want to leave you with documents that they may not be privy to share with you. I understand teachers are put in a hard position sometimes to defend the works that they've selected, so I'm going to leave you with some information from the college board, because that's what we're striving for. The college board picks texts that they want defended on their tests, and we need to have students prepared to write those AP tests. And I think that what you'll find is if you challenge the curriculum that's being taught or change it in any way, you'll have far more AP parents sitting in this audience upset about what you're not preparing their students for than you will have a select few who are upset about what their students may be asked to read. I'll leave this with Don Yeo. I know you all received an email from me, so I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Runbaum. I'm a parent here in Lansing. I also am the dean of Parenticidal Education at Kansas Community College. I'm coming in regards to a motion that was placed last board session and will be on vote tonight, allowing board members to be able to enter into conversations through the second session via phone or Zoom or any other technology method out there. I believe that board members should be allowed to enter those sessions even if they're not physically present. The concern has to do with confidentiality. Well, those board members who cannot be present at an executive session can use headphones, whatever means you decide for them to be present at those meetings. There is no way that anyone can state or dis... Let me back up. Yes, those meetings are confidential, but there's no way to prove if another board member here has their phone on to record those sessions. You have to go off of the pay leave and trust in your fellow board members that they will keep items confidential. So therefore, that's why I'm here. I want, I think it's important to allow those members, and specifically Mr. Dalby, to be able to participate in those meetings via phone and Zoom. And the last point I want to make on that, boards all across the world utilize technology to be present in those meetings, executive sessions, public sessions, does not matter. They are allowed to be present in those sessions via technology. We should not allow or constrict our board members because they have a different situation that cannot allow them to be present.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sections four and five, does anybody have any insects, any questions, is there any lead report or any administrative reports, questions, concerns? Alright, seven dot one, high school science instructional resource adoption.
We bring the high school science resources to you for approval tonight. The first thing I do want to do is go through real quick our curriculum writing and resource adoption process, especially with some of the challenges we've had lately, and we are asking for a lot of money and have continued to grow our math resources, and I know there's been some board member questions about that. And Holly created this graphic. She's actually at a conference this week on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so I said I'd try my best to step in. First, we start by looking at the Kansas State standards, and this is kind of our roadmap. And we start with Kansas State standards, and they're the foundations for all of our curriculum work. We look at that. We choose in our local curriculum, we begin to write that through our PLCs meeting, look at the state standards, what do the standards mean, what do they look like for us, what are the students actually going to do? A large part of that is what vocabulary are we using, what are the kids actually going to do? The next part is something that Holly, this is a choice that we make in Lansing, and it is a lot of work, but we pilot research and evidence-based instructional resources in order to best serve our local curriculum. I know sometimes we've spent money on a curriculum resource, and then we have to supplement it, because understand, no one's writing curriculum resources for Kansas. It just doesn't happen. One, we aren't a large enough state for people to do that. If we lived in Texas or we lived in California, we maybe could, they would align a lot better, but we're writing in Kansas, and that does make a difference. And that part, for example, the English teachers, they piloted three, our K5 are currently piloting three EOA resources. It's a lot of, it's a lot of work to take all of those resources, the teachers look at it, how does it teach the curriculum, how does it align to our local curriculum, does it teach the state standards that we need it to teach? And that's our best, that's a lot of work, and it still isn't perfect. And you see that the lines between two and three are fairly straight, and the lines between three and four are kind of curvy, and that's on, not on accident. Because the next, at four, where we have a resource implementation in the first year between four and five, that's where we use a new resource. We've been, for example, in our math, we've been using our math resource for a year. And one of the, one of the purchases that we had in this last year was something for fluency in mathematics, because there just wasn't enough practice in that resource. It does a good job of teaching the basic curriculum. It did not do a wonderful job on enough practice, and, and the ability to track that practice for kids, especially for lower grade level, for the math classes, is not extremely important. And we took 18 months of looking at the resource, finding ways through our BLT and through our DLT and through our PLCs to make sure that we're using the resource as best as we can, and it's still fell a little bit short. And now we're in the resource implementation for year two, where we revisit the local curriculum, and we start to align that local, that resource with our local curriculum and what we're using through that resource into our local curriculum document. And Holly likes to say, it's like the laundry, it's never done. And that, I think, is one thing that our teachers are finding, is we revisit that every year, and as we say, what's going well and what isn't going well, it's definitely a process, and it's definitely an opportunity for teachers to work together, and it's definitely an opportunity that sometimes comes with wailing and ash in its heat. Because it is difficult sometimes, we have different sort of things, and it takes a lot of time to do this well. But I wanted to, I wanted to show you that writing and resource adoption process, put that out there, and then what's actually on our agenda. This is for HMH Biology, Modern Chemistry and Physics 2017 Updates and Additive Science. Science is, well, I would guess that it's not Rob's favorite thing to have to find a teacher in science because of the fact that we have, you have a biology certification, you have physics certification, you have chemistry certification, and just because you have a biology certification, it's not anything that I can teach physics. And those are very difficult things to find at times, and likewise, it's, the resources are very specialized. And so the science folks have piloted different biology, different chemistry, different physics resources, and they continue on to bring to you. After having gone through the PLC, the building leadership team and our DLT team, there's a lot of eyes on them. The one thing I do need to mention, we will be, this does not include physical science. One thing that we have found is our current physical science resource that you, that we asked you to adopt last year, is that we had some issues with our publisher online, and it did not perform the way that it was sold and the way that through the pilot process that we thought that we were going to perform. So we're actually going to return that resource for no cost to us that we had to purchase last year, and so that's good, that our teachers dug in and have... If you've been on phone with tech support, and you don't get good tech support, it's extremely frustrating, especially as administrators and teachers and building leadership, that's one thing that we'll be bringing in the near future, probably in May, and having for any physical science resource. But this should, this should address our, our high school science for the next six years.
Any questions?
Yeah, a quick question. Hey Dan, when is this science curriculum going to be in the classroom this spring?
This would actually be for, this would actually be for next August, John.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep. Any additional questions? A move that we approve the high school science instructional resource adoption as presented. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All ayes? Move to seven dot two, the executive session policy. I know this is a little different than what I had at the end of the last meeting.
I'll speak to that real quick. When I called KASB about adding, adding this part to our policy, I asked Sam, the gentleman that I seem to talk to quite often, if it would be better to have a separate policy on just the executive session and that attendance, and, or just add it to our executive sessions policy, which is VCBK, and he said, you can really do it either way, that if you're going to just, if you're going to have an executive sessions policy, it makes sense for everything to be encompassed in that. And so from up here, all we added was members must be in attendance to participate in the executive session.
I know this is something that we discussed last meeting, is now that we've had a month to think about it, does anybody else have any additional thoughts, preferences, change your mind?
I'm assuming that when John gets back, he can just sit down with Dan and kind of show the Reader's Digest version of what he needs to know from those papers.
Sure. John, did you have, did you have anything?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for recognizing me. I did watch the video and after listening to each one of your comments, and to me, this is really just about trust. If, if we can't trust each other to do the right thing, then we really don't even have a board of education. We just have seven people who are looking after their own agendas. And I think that we have to trust each other, and it was brought up on the video from last meeting, you know, when, every time we walk out of the board meeting or executive session, we trust each other not to share the things that were included in that executive session. And whether you were actually in the room or not, that trust is no different. I have to trust that Michelle is not going to go home and talk to her husband about what we discussed in regards to him being the basketball coach anymore. You know, we've got to trust me to not to go back to the hotel room and talk to Stephanie about what's going on with the future of the hiring of the principal or a superintendent, whoever. So it's about trust, and if, if I can't make the requisite security happen from a distant location, then I should just say, hey, I can't participate today, guys, because I can't give the security that's required. And so I do think that we have to trust each other, and that I don't, I don't think that this policy, which is born out of distrust, should be supported in this district. One of our values is integrity and another is excellence. That's all I have. Thank you, John.
Dan, what did he say in this? Did they say yes or no, or is...
They said it's perfectly legal for you, for them to, to, for them to be in executive session through whatever means that you, you provide. They said it's really a local board decision. And they said to be very careful what decision you make, because it is, it's something that it doesn't, it is a limiting action, and they said that's the one thing to really keep in mind, that it is a limiting action that will, will be there. And that was one caveat to if you would want to do that or not. Legally, he said there's no issue with that at all, so.
Could you explain is limiting then?
It's limiting because if you're gone, you can't, you can't be there. You're not, you're not allowed to go.
It goes this way?
Yes. If it goes this way, you all just need to realize that whenever anybody's gone, whatever you're talking about, when you're hiring a new superintendent, and if somebody comes down ill and they're quarantined to wherever they go, they can't, they can't join in, and that would be...
Yeah, so if we have some kind of misconduct in the district that has to be addressed immediately, we have to physically put four people in the executive session as opposed to calling them in in an impromptu type situation.
Like I said, kind of follows with what we, what we had in discussion lines last time. It isn't, John, it isn't you specific, it's what is the parameters that we want to put around what we think executive session should be. It was me driving down, you know, down the highway, you know, and not, and it's not, and I don't think it's trust, it's more of control of the, control of the environment is the biggest issue. Because that is such a key facet.
It is, but that, that all comes down to trust as well. Like Cheryl said, we don't know that somebody isn't recording the executive session even now. We trust each other that that's not happening. That the environment isn't controlled as we trust that it is, that, and, you know, that is not, that office that belongs to the superintendent is not a secure facility. So it, again, it goes back to, we trust the people to do the right thing all the time, and whether they're in executive session or not, it's, it's, I haven't read my oath lately, but it wouldn't surprise me if our oath says something about, you know, protecting our employees in this district. I know that our federal does. So we will not be able to create a perfect environment, absolutely not. But I do agree with Dan that this is, when you, when you approve a policy that actually handcuffs you, inevitably will come back to bite you someday. And nobody can predict what's going to happen in the future in regards to having to put at least four members into executive session in a time-constrained manner, and this policy would prevent that from happening. Like I said, if any one of us, any one of the seven of us or the two members that are going to be joining us in January, if they're in a position where they can't meet the intent of executive session, they need to bow out.
I'm either way. I mean, I...
Is there a way to...
Going out the door, but can I say something?
No.
John, it's not, for me personally, it's not about trust. It's about a big fat lawsuit. If we have someone listening in and we don't know if someone is with them or not, if you mention personnel issues, if you mention what's going on with a specific child and you name that child, then you violated all kinds of rules of behavior. And I know darn well you wouldn't do that, but you can't always be sure what's going to come down the line, and once a policy gets set like this, then they tend to stay that way. And I think that's risky. I don't want, I don't want kids' information being public, and I sure don't want personnel issues out in the general population, which could easily happen. You talk about people taking, well, I'm not smart enough to record a, a meeting anyway, but I think it's more about legal issues than it is about trust.
Thank you, the kind nod, Claudia. I understand where you're coming from.
I don't see this, John, in any way about you. This is about president and boards.
Yeah.
Not, it hasn't, it would be the same if I were not able to be here. It wouldn't, it wouldn't matter who it was.
Any other comments?
Is there a way to, I mean, within our policy to put, you know, that we, how you can, like, like you said, they would have to wear headphones, or you would have to be, I mean, I know you can...
The biggest problem is control of that. You know, we're able to sit across the room and look at each other and...
I agree. Yeah, I mean, I'm...
And the legality piece of that, and it's just control of the environment, mitigating our risk and exposure.
But this world's going digital, and it's not going to get any better. Pretty soon working is going to be all alone. I mean, I don't know. It is a touchy subject, but businesses run, billion dollar contracts are done over, nobody's even face to face anymore, so.
But that shouldn't, not at the local level either, meaning...
True, but pretty soon, we won't meet, boards won't meet, you know, we're going to be all Skype or whatever, and technology's running this country, so.
Maybe by the time we come to that bridge, there'll be protections of some sort.
Anybody have it? I mean, it is, that is, that is a concern, absolutely, because we've tried to minimize policies that do handcuffs, take absolutes out. You know, my biggest concern though is the legality and exposure. That's why we, you know, we wanted this discussion. I move that we approve the executive policy as presented. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All ayes? Aye.
Nay.
Five to two. John and John were nays.
I'm a nay.
Yes. Got it. Thank you. Seven dot three, superintendent search characteristics committee.
One of your next steps in your superintendent search will be the, Don Yeo, when was that? January? One of your next steps in your superintendent search will be, Don Yeo, when was that, January fifteenth?
They'll be coming back to, for you all to talk about what characteristics you're looking for in your next leader.
And a part of that was to set some other search committee, if you choose to do that. And we need those in place before they come back on January fifteenth.
So what needs to happen, my friend?
Go.
So what needs to happen, I think, do you remember the last election search? We had, maybe we had a committee, I think Cheryl was on that. We had admin, we had license, some licensed staff on committees. I'll remember, remember, students?
Students, yeah.
There's four, I think, or...
Yeah, you did leadership. So your goal is to come up with those, whichever committee you want, and then let me know who you want on those committees. So you can give me two names each, two or three names each for each committee, be it email or response or whatever. And then I want to send the invite out, they have a form letter to send out to the committee members. I have elected that out before Christmas, so they have enough time for January fifteenth. And so KASB will come back on January fifteenth during the day meeting with those committees, or by an hour each.
So I move that we approve the creation of the four committees as presented for this board to back on tonight, and then you two of us will have the opportunity afterwards to send, and Don Yeo will be in charge of that. And the board members will, after the meeting, be able to send recommendations to them.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the four committees were, could you say that again, please?
Was this the same committees, or you had...
Yeah.
Community, students, staff, and admin.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, you said, your first one, you said license, so...
License, I don't remember if we had classified in there or not. We can, I think some classified, you want to, I think it's... There's kind of interest with some classified, so you guys can determine if you want license or license that is classified, just let me know.
Define that.
I would, I would say we want both.
Oh, license or support staff.
Faculty.
Or your student service, your...
Okay, so license is...
Teachers, anybody who's on the department unit.
Okay. So we want administration, community, staff to include license, and then students. Those are the four groups. Give us a second. Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight, for executive session. I move that we go into executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance and personal changes pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under CROMA. And the open meeting will resume in the boardroom at nine oh five P M. Eight oh five P M. I was like, shit. Bear yourself. Take a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?